Okay, I'll call our June 15th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmit.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Chris McMichael, pastor of In Grafted Word Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. We thank you for our city, for the safety and protection you afford us here. We thank you, Father, for these men and the wisdom of God you grant them to lead our city proper. May they make wise decisions with the spirit of wisdom and revelation from you. We thank you, Father, for allowing us to be here in this place. Thank you, Lord, for helping us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. City Manager Davison, do you have any changes?
I do not have any changes.
All right, I have one change. Item nine A will be moved and become item seven P. Nine A to become item seven P. Is there a motion on the amended agenda?
It's on move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Four A, proclamation honoring the CHS Coral Department. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. We're glad to have some folks with us and have as our special guests at the city council meeting. We have Mary Flatt, who was the choreographer for a wonderful show, The Phantom of the Opera. We've got some cast members here also that Mary will introduce to us in just a bit. I have a proclamation I want to share with this audience and with these cast members. Just a couple of brief remarks if I could to the cast, to Mary, Michael Schott, Kim, all those had a part in it. Every year, I go to these shows and I think, it just can't get any better. And we sit in those audiences and think, man, these young people are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old and are performing at a very, very high quality. And it just seems like every year, you raise the bar higher, Mary. And you are really a tribute, not only to that show, but to the school and the community and on behalf of the hundreds and hundreds of us that enjoyed it, and behalf of the city council, we appreciate your being here tonight. And we have this proclamation in honor of you and what you've done that the mayor will present to you in just a moment. And I'd like to give you an opportunity at that time also to make any remarks you care to make. Proclamation, whereas the pursuit of excellence and the highest standards are desirable life goals, and whereas the Cookeville High School Coral Department has consistently demonstrated such pursuit, and whereas this effort has been exhibited in recent years by such productions as Oklahoma, The King and I, Les Misérables, West Side Story, Mary Poppins, and most recently, The Phantom of the Opera. Whereas, the Cookeville community has been the fortunate beneficiary of this exceptional talent and diligence and commitment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Cookeville City Council, that the Cookeville High School Coral Department be highly commended for quality entertainment and a sense of pride instilled in our community this day, fifteenth day of June, two thousand and seventeen. Signed by Mayor Ricky Shelton. Meredith, Mary, if you would come up to the podium and Mary, if you'd present that, I think, from his page.
She can do that.
All right, yeah. Yeah, there you go. And for the rest of the audience, you know, who hadn't showed your appreciation, I think a round of applause.
You don't want to stay up here. I need a support system. First, I'll introduce some of our cast members. We have Griffin Hawkins, Emma Schott, Wyatt Smith, and Andrew Ogdenog. And they were all wonderful. If you saw the show, they were just amazing. They're always impressive.
Could you mind? There you go. Thanks.
Sorry, I'm not loud enough. Again, I'll say, this is Andrew Ogdenog, and Wyatt Smith, Emma Schott, and Griffin Hawkins. And we just want to thank you so much. This recognition is really important to us, and having the city's support is incredible. So just thank you so much. We're honored to be here, and we really appreciate this.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Five A, consider approval of minutes of council being held on June 1st, two thousand and seventeen. Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, hold a public hearing and consider on second reading ordinance, a second and final reading ordinance O-170608, providing a tax levy for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. Ms. Emble.
Mayor and council, this ordinance sets the tax rate for the new fiscal year at eighty-four cents. That's the same rate as prior year, so there's no tax increase. There's been no change in the ordinance and have received no calls or comments since first reading, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-170609, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. Ms. Emble.
Yes, this ordinance appropriates seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars to our government agencies, joint ventures, and various nonprofits. There's been no change in the reading since first reading or in the ordinance since first reading, and we've had no calls or comments, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And five D, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-170610, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, and agencies of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. Ms. Emble.
Yes, Mayor and council, this ordinance appropriates the expenditures for all of our funds citywide, our utilities, and the hospital for the new fiscal year. Total appropriation is four hundred and thirty million, six seventy-eight, one forty-eight. There's been no change in the ordinance since first reading, and we've received no calls or comments, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item six, the consent agenda. Six A, set a date, seven twenty seventeen, for a public hearing on ordinance O-170613, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title fourteen, Chapter seven, Section fourteen dash seven one two pertaining to storm water management guidelines. Six B, consider awarding bid for chemicals for the water quality department. And six C, consider awarding bid for lights for the electric department. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Under new business, seven A, consider resolution R-170607, commending Fire Chief Roger Fuqua for services rendered. So this is Chief's last official meeting tonight as a city council, and we will all have a few things to say here in a minute, but I just wanted to first read our proclamation that we have, resolution that we have for you. Whereas, embarking on a career journey in public service that would span over three decades, Roger Fuqua joined the city of Cookeville Fire Department as a firefighter in October nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas Roger has shown loyalty and dedication to the department and citizens of Cookeville during his tenure, working through the ranks, achieving captain in nineteen ninety-seven, and the ultimate promotion to chief in two thousand and eleven. And whereas Chief Fuqua's distinguished service has not only impacted this community, but has included leadership in the esteemed position as a member of the Board of Directors for the Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association from two thousand and thirteen to present, along with the Upper Cumberland Regional Council of Fire Chiefs in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. And whereas Chief Fuqua has earned many notable accomplishments during his tenure, including a fire science technology degree, assistant to the Commissioner's Certificate, Tennessee Association of Rescue Squad Instructor One, along with numerous certificates from ongoing educational training through the National Fire Academy and the State of Tennessee Commission on Firefighting. And whereas honor and appreciation is due to Chief Fuqua's treasured family, wife Annette, and daughter Ashley, for the support they have provided to Chief Fuqua, their firefighters and community he serves, as well as the safety of the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, it is the sense of this council that those dedicated public servants who unselfishly devote their lives to the preservation, protection, and safety of others are worthy and due full praise for their commitment and noble endeavors. Now therefore, be it further resolved that this most auspicious occasion be marked by honoring Chief Roger Fuqua upon the occasion of his retirement after thirty-eight years of dedicated service to the Cookeville Fire Department, this community and region, and that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office. Congratulations, Chief. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will. If you'd like to come up and...this is your chance to take a shot at...
Oh, it's been a great ride. I tell you, fantastic balls, great council to work with. The department heads, Ms. Gail, always willing to help. But most of all, I'd like to thank my men. They're second to none. They're great. And my wife putting up with me. All the alarms going off in the middle of the night and her nudging me to reset the pager. But thank yous.
Council members, anything you'd like to share?
You want to go?
Yeah.
Let's start over here at GM.
Roger, I want to thank you for your service and all the years that you've put in. I appreciate your quiet leadership and leadership by example. Looks like the men love you and appreciate the knowledge that you have. We do have a great fire department, and you're part of the reason that we do. And I thank you for that service.
Roger, this group has probably heard me say before that I believe, just as a matter of life, that almost everything rises and falls on leadership. And you have, your leadership has been exemplary with character, with commitment. Thirty-eight years of service to this city, which we deeply appreciate. We wish you the best. God bless you as you go forward from this.
Chief?
Well, I've known the Chief for about twenty years, and he's a solid guy. Not flashy, but very solid and able to do his task. And we have one of the best fire departments in the state of Tennessee through his leadership, and I really commend him for his service.
Thank you, Mayor. How do you put in words, in just a couple sentences, thirty-eight years of service, public service, putting yourself in danger and ordering men to go into danger? You can't. But please know that the city, and Larry Epps in particular, really very much appreciate so much what you have done. And go forward knowing that, and sleep well, knowing that you have left your department in great hands, and your leadership will continue. And thank you, Chief.
That's Mayor, you said, how do you put those into words? And I think the, I think the best words that you can say is, he's lived it, and he walked the walk every day, and he let the actions speak. And I personally have a long history with my dad, and I served as chief for a while. And Roger, had a special relationship with him, and I just appreciate all that you've meant to the department, and especially as chief over the last six years. Appreciate you and hope you have a very happy retirement. And maybe Annette won't kick you out of the house too soon.
We have one other special, it's not on the agenda, but we have Senator Bailey's here. So Senator Bailey, would you like to come up here and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's an honor to be before you this evening, and especially on this occasion, to be able to present a proclamation to Fire Chief Roger Fuqua for his number of years of service to the state of Tennessee as well as to the city of Cookeville. So on behalf of the Lieutenant Governor and the Tennessee State Senate, Roger, I present to you a proclamation from the Tennessee State Senate. Thank you for your years of service.
All right. See, we'll do, somebody may make a motion, I make a motion on resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of second. We've discussed it, so let's all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Very good. Seven B, consider resolution R-170608, amending the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual of the city of Cookeville. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, present for your consideration this evening, resolution R-170608. It does amend specifically Chapter eight, benefits and programs. There's some changes to Section three and then one to Section nine. Changes to Section three are in keeping with our goals of improving and managing costs related to our health insurance fund. So the change to Section three point oh two is going to remove a reference to regular part-time employees. We provided health insurance for regular part-time employees for some time. When we engaged in services of BB and T, there was some question about the amounts we were charging. And then with the Affordable Care Act, there are all a whole new set of rules that dictate how full-time is determined. So we're removing the reference to regular part-time employees. All employees other than full-time will be eligible for insurance under the provisions of the measurement period of the Affordable Care Act. Section three point oh three, because it references regular full-time and regular part-time employees, and we've just removed that reference, will be removing both references and simply reference employees as it relates to eligibility requirements detailed in the provider's contact, contract with the city of Cookeville, which is our contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield right now. So that's just a housekeeping piece. Section three point oh four, we've talked about this for a long time, and we thought that with the adoption of the new budget, it might be a good time to make the change. So we are adding to Section three point oh four, which provides for retirees, we're going to add a statement for employees hired on or after July 1, two thousand and seventeen. Participation in the retiree insurance plan will terminate when the retiree reaches the age of Medicare eligibility. That's not going to affect any employee that we have today. Brenda's talked, we've heard it all. June 30th, two thousand and sixteen, the actuarially determined liability for health insurance for this group is fourteen, over fourteen million dollars. And we're pay-as-you-go, so no funds are set aside in trust to offset costs for that. Like I said, it's going to be a long time before we realize some significant change from this, but we think it's a good time to make the change. Section nine is related to our tuition refund program, which I'm still so pleased that the city of Cookeville is able to continue to offer. But some changes have been made with that. The governor's new plan that he's announced with additional free educational opportunities for adults. The change in Tennessee Tech no longer being a TBR institution. So Section nine, we're removing the reference to the limit on hours per semester in TBR institutions. And we're establishing a maximum reimbursement per fiscal year of three thousand dollars. Also provides that courses offered at no cost or that are funded by another source are not eligible for the refund. And then we're adding a statement where participants are also informed that reimbursements exceeding amounts under IRS regulations in a calendar year are considerable taxable income and shall be reported as taxable wages. That could occur because we reimburse on the fiscal, but the calendar year could cross over with the IRS regs. So that's it in a nutshell. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have, but I would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven C, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for geotechnical services at Neal Street and South Maple Avenue for possible location of a new police station. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, as you know, for well over a year now, we've been trying to identify a location that would possibly serve as a new site for a new police headquarters. And we have kind of scoured the city trying to find that location, and we have identified the corner at South Maple and Neal Street as a potential site. It has great access for the public as well as the department. And this particular property, the property owner has just given us a right of entry to look at geotechnical work so we can analyze the property, see what is there to make sure it would be suitable for a police station. And this contract is for geotechnical work. Sixteen borings on the site. We'll concentrate on the four to five acres that's at the corner, but there's about nine point six to ten acres in total. We'd like to do some geotechnical work on the additional, over the entire ten acres, just to make sure what is there, try the best to determine that we don't see any issues with this particular location related to the soils. And, but I would ask your approval to enter into this contract for the geotechnical work for this site. The contract is not to exceed thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, and I'm asking your approval.
Thank you. So move, second?
Second.
Second. Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Civic Plus Software. Jeff.
Excuse me. Mayor and city council, a committee was formed last year to investigate various problem reporting mobile application services and make a recommendation to the city manager. The committee reviews six different services, and unanimous will be selected Civic Plus as the best overall choice for the city. Civic Plus is a company that specializes in web design and internet applications specifically made for local government. The Civic Plus agreement includes the following. Civic Plus will professionally redesign and host the city's website. The new website will be fully ADA compliant. The service will include a city of Cookeville mobile app with a report of problem functionality and push notification. Service also includes functionality that can potentially replace existing subscription services like board book, which we do the council agenda, and MailChimp. Civic Plus agrees to professionally redesign the city's website every four years at no additional cost beyond the annual maintenance fees. Agreement includes three days of onsite training for the city website editors, an online training video library, and twenty-four seven telephone support. An optional component called Civic Media is available for an additional fee that will enable live video streaming and video storage. Civic Plus has several Tennessee cities and clients, including Galton, Murfreesboro, Laverne, Lebanon, Farragut, Bristol, Goodlessville. We've talked to a few of these cities once we get a hold of them, get back with, and say all have positive reviews and are very complimentary of Civic Plus. The cost with Civic Media option for one year not to exceed twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars with an annual maintenance fee is seven thousand dollars per year beginning year two. Without Civic Media option, the cost would not exceed nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. An annual maintenance fee is fifty-five hundred beginning on year two. It's right, it's my recommendation that we go with the Civic Media option so that our live streaming would be compatible with the website. And the year one cost is not twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. This is a budgeted item and is a shared cost with the utilities, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote? Got to talk faster, we've got a long agenda.
That's okay. Keep moving.
Seven E, consider approval of Employee Health Insurance Administrative Services Agreement and Stop Loss Contract. Ms. Emble.
Kick me or something.
Mayor and council, I have two items for your consideration this evening. There are two components of our employee health insurance. The first one is the stop loss coverage, and the second is the third-party administrator. We have an annual stop loss contract that expires June 30th of this year, and it is currently with Blue Re, which is a subsidiary of Blue Cross Blue Shield. They have had the annual contract since two thousand and fourteen. The contract price is seventeen thirty for single coverage and forty-two sixty-three for family coverage. Specific attachment point is a hundred and fifty thousand and aggregating specific deductible of sixty thousand. And just to show you a history of claims that we've had on our stop loss contracts over the years, in fiscal year sixteen, we received reimbursement under our stop loss contract of a hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars for claims. And before that, you have to go back to two thousand and eleven, when we had claims under our stop loss contract of a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars. So the renewal options we have to consider are, if we keep the same a hundred and fifty thousand dollar specific attachment and sixty thousand dollar deductible, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Blue Re has given us a quote of eighteen fifty-seven for a single contract, forty-six forty-nine for a family contract. And we received an additional quote from Berkshire Hathaway of seventeen fifty-one for a single contract and forty-six ninety-five for a family contract. But if we go with somebody other than a Blue Cross Blue Shield company, Blue Shield, Blue Cross Blue Shield will charge us what they call an interface fee, and it's a dollar twenty per subscriber per month. So that adds an additional cost to the city of seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. So if we went with Berkshire Hathaway, the total cost to the city would be two hundred and twenty-two thousand, four twelve, which is an increase of eleven point nine percent over what we're paying now. And the Blue Cross Blue Shield total would be two hundred and sixteen thousand, fifty-five, which is an increase of eight point seven percent over what we're paying now. So we went back to Blue Re and said, you know, what other options do we have? So they gave us an additional option of keeping the premiums that we're paying now the same. So it would be seventeen thirty for a single contract, forty-two sixty-three for a family contract, but we would have to assume an additional ten thousand dollars in increasing the specific attachment point. So that's what we're recommending to you tonight that we do, is keep the, keep the premiums that we're paying the same, but assume an additional ten thousand dollars in risking that specific attachment point. And then the other component of this is our third-party administrator. Blue Cross Blue Shield has been our administrator of our plan for a number of years now, and we participate in their network S. The expiring contract we have with them was a three-year, multi-year contract that expires June 30th of this year, and it had locked in the medical fees they charged us to thirty-seven thirty-three per employee per month, and the dental was four oh three. So it's an estimated about just under two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So for the renewal for our medical, we had our broker BB and T actually shop our medical out. We had not done that in a while. And they received three quotes from different carriers, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Cigna, and Aetna. And they did all the background work, analyzing all the quotes, comparing both the administrative costs, and actually did a price comparison of claims. So we sat down with them and reviewed all the results of that, and based on what we saw, we are recommending that we renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we've talked to them about doing another multi-year agreement. So it'll be a three-year agreement, and they will lock in the medical price. It'll stay the same as what it is now for year one and year two with an increase in year three. And you can see that there. For year one and year two, that medical piece of it will remain at thirty-three seventy, which is what it's been the last three years. And then in year three, it'll go up three percent to thirty-four seventy-one. Now, to give us that guarantee, there are some conditions that go along with that. And it's kind of some standard language, but it's important to point out to you that there is a penalty equal to one month's service if we terminate before the three-year agreement is up. And that would be about twenty-one to twenty-two thousand dollars with the enrollment numbers we have now. Blue Cross Blue Shield retains... Blue Cross Blue Shield retains the right to adjust the fee for major changes in legislation, plan, design, or regulations. And I can say with the planned changes we made this last year, it did not kick into that provision this year. And with the changes we made and with the regulations that changed, that didn't kick in, so. And then they also reserve the right to change the administrative fee based on fluctuations in enrollment numbers, actual number of covered employees, and the ratio comparing subscribers to total enrollment. So having said all that, this kind of summarizes what we're recommending to you tonight. We're recommending to continue with Blue Cross Blue Shield as our third-party administrator under a three-year multi-agreement. So the cost to there using the medical, broker cost, COBRA fee, and dental fee would be about $256,597, which is the same fees that we're paying right now. And then a one-year contract for stop-loss, we're recommending that we continue with Blue Re, keep the same premiums that we're paying now, but assume that additional $10,000 in the specific attachment point. So it'll be $160,000 specific attachment point with a $60,000 aggregate deductible. So the total fees for fiscal year 17, 18 should remain the same as what we're paying now. It'll fluctuate slightly depending on the monthly enrollment, so. But that's what I'm recommending to you tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider approval of lease agreement and payment for four 2017 police motorcycles. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, as you just noted, this is a lease agreement for our police motorcycles. We looked at several options and decided that a three-year lease would be most beneficial to us mainly because of the cost. Of course, each, we would pay that annually based upon, subject to funding. Based upon our specifications, Boswell Motorcycle is a sole-source provider in that they are within the only authorized dealer and also the only authorized warranty provider within a 50-mile radius of Cookville. The lease payment for these four motorcycles to include the equipment swapover, which is a little over $788 apiece. The total cost for this year is $15,155.44. We would start that lease on July the 1st, 2017, and it is a budgeted item in the 2017, 2018 budget. It would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a VOCA grant contract between the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs and the City of Cookville. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, last month, you authorized us to apply for this VOCA grant, which is Victims of Crime Act grant. We were notified on June the 5th that we were awarded that grant. This particular grant is administered through the Office of Criminal Justice Programs. Specifically, as you may recall, it is to hire and employ a victim services coordinator. It is a three-year grant subject to funding. The total amount of the grant for the three-year period is $180,895. The grant includes, covers salaries, office equipment, training, et cetera. Our responsibility, as you may recall, is a 20% match, and we meet the match primarily with supervisory and in-kind expenses, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider approval of emergency repair of side-load sanitation truck. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, recently one of our reserve sanitation trucks, the side-load arm tore up. We got a quote to replace it from Stringfellow, which is the supplier of that. It's a sole-source supplier. It's a $38,720.96. Request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven I, consider awarding bid for grinding, brush, and disposal. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids for grinding services for the brush we're bringing in at the mulch site. TFR Enterprises was the low bidder. Their cost is $6,000 mobilization fee. The cost per hour is $300 with an optional cost of $400 for 100 cubic yards of material removed from the site. I would like the council to approve that option. We've got another option in the next item, but for different ways to remove the material, but I would like the city manager, we'll analyze this and determine which one would be the most economical to the city to use. I'd request your approval.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven J, consider approval and accept Putnam County Contractor's bid for hauling. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, Putnam County Solid Waste has a contract with Danny Roberts Construction for the use of his equipment and different things. One of the things is hauling, using his dump trucks. The price is $50 per hour. It's a five-year contract, and we would like to use Mr. Roberts' services and piggyback on the county's contract to remove the brush from the site. We think that would be a little cheaper option than using the option with the bidder. If we get into buying and we have to use both, we will. That's why I'm asking for flexibility for the city manager to determine which would be the best way to go.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
The bidder gave us option to haul per load if we needed him to, correct?
That's correct.
So it'll, the flexibility with the city manager, with the county person or this bidder, and just use the best that's available at that particular time.
That's what we're going to try to do, yes.
All right.
Any other discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven K, consider approval of deed, bill of sale, and easement grant relative to the purchase of TVA 69 KV facilities in Cookville. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, as we discussed at the work session on Monday, back in June of 2015, the Cookville City Council approved an agreement to proceed with the conveyance of TVA 69 facilities in the city limits of Cookville. As part of that agreement that you approved back in 2015, we were able to negotiate with TVA that we would continue paying facilities rental on those facilities until the time of purchase. Don't think TVA thought it would be as long as what it's been since it's over two years now, and the facility rentals payments that we've made to date are in excess of $700,000. The fair market value of the land and the depreciated facilities was determined by TVA to be $187,700. So basically, we'll wind up buying all of their facilities, and they will owe us $520,000. In your packet, you've got a recorded plat of the property inside the substation. There is also a deed and bill of sale that TVA will approve, and there's also a grant of access road easement. In your package with that recorded plat, the shaded road to the left is CC Count, and basically what this easement is for is to use their little driveway into our property inside their substation. So with that, I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven L, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement and delivery point agreement with TVA relative to the 69 KV facilities. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, also as we discussed on Monday, the license agreement is basically, it provides, TVA is not selling us the dirt where the poles and wires run, so we need a license agreement with them that will provide us access and use of their easements and rideways that are pertinent to the 69 KV transmission facilities being purchased. It allows us permission to install, operate, and maintain those transmission facilities on the leased premises. It requires us to comply with the applicable laws and governmental regulations that TVA would have to, but that's no, that will be no problem for us. We've had similar license agreements in the past. The delivery point agreement portion, once we buy these facilities, we'll be removing delivery point, monthly delivery point charges at East Cookville and West Cookville. Those are $1,500 a month each. The new delivery point that we'll establish at Kane Creek Subdivision where they're selling us the 161 to 69 KV delivery point will be $2,000 a month and results in about a $1,000 a month savings. And with that, I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Seven M, consider approval of emergency repair of roof at CPAC. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On May 27th, during the storms we had on May 27th, the Cookville Performing Arts Center suffered some damage to the roof, to the rubber roof and to the coping along the walls of the building, and that required us to get some repairs done pretty quickly, so we contacted Cookville Sheet Metal Works who did the original work installing that roof. They came very quickly and started work on that, and I'm here tonight to ask you to approve an emergency repair not to exceed $15,000, which is what they're indicating that it will not exceed. So I would ask for your approval for the emergency repair.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven N, consider approval of proposal sole-source provider for water plant SCADA backup system at the water treatment facility. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking council approval for the city manager to enter into a sole-source proposal from MR Systems to provide backup software for our SCADA system that we currently use at our water treatment facility. MR will provide the software for a new server and our existing workstations. We will provide the server that all the software will be loaded up on. The new server will provide a backup to our current SCADA system. The current system will be converted to a backup role with the new server acting as our main SCADA server at the plant operations. The cost of the software is $20,265. The project install cost and warranty is $7,077. The total proposal cost is $27,342. The software fees are the same as our current project we have at the wastewater treatment plant, which was included in a bid in 2016. The install costs are in line with the market rates. This purchase is necessary for us to maintain reliable operations at our water treatment plant. I've got one slide there that I included. This is sort of what our dashboard, your first screen that they use and see, and then they can bore down, but it basically lets the operators run and operate and monitor and do everything. And so I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven O, consider awarding bid for Royal Oak County Farm Road Sewer Project. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids, and it doesn't really show up well on the screen. I think probably on your screen it shows up. I included a map of the area that's in question that we're going to install low-pressure sewers, and we have opened those bids, received five bids. The low bidder was Mid-South Utility Group, $516,389.64, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Ronnie, is this the type of sewer that we've done south?
That we put in southeast sewer, yes.
That's okay.
That's considerable savings.
Yes.
Compared to gravity.
Oh, yes. Considerable.
Any other comments? All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seven P, receive report of city manager evaluation by city attorney. Dan Rader.
Mayor and council, I'm very pleased to report the results of the first annual evaluation for city manager Mike Davidson. I will say that in June of 2015, when Mr. Davidson assumed this role permanently and took over from Mr. Shipley, this was a new venture for him, although he had been the finance director for some time. So we let some time pass to do the first evaluation. The way the evaluation was done was each individual council member did a separate, independent, and confidential evaluation, submitted it to my office. We compiled all of the evaluations, so this wasn't a collaborative effort. However, I think the results are nothing short of outstanding based on the, based upon the performance of Mr. Davidson as viewed by this council and Mayor Shelton. The results of, Mr. Davidson was evaluated in 42 separate categories over six large categories. He, out of a scale of five, he received 4.64, which qualifies as excellent, an excellent evaluation under the city's employment evaluation scale, and would entitle him, subject to council approval, to the maximum raise permitted under the, under the scale, under the protocols for regular city employees. I think it is worth noting that the highest rating that he got, as everybody might imagine, was business and finance, since that was his background and since the city is so well-run financially. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, mayor and council, to take whatever action the council deems appropriate.
Thank you. The city manager's total score of 4.6 would qualify him for the maximum amount of increase allowed for all city employees that attain the exceptional outstanding ready. Therefore, hereby make a motion to grant an annual salary increase in the amount of 3% for city manager Mike Davidson. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
I'm just glad that we found Mike. We actually didn't find him, found us, and when the process went through, I knew he would do a good job, and the time has proven that, and I appreciate him taking the leadership that he has. I love his quiet, confident ability to communicate with us and keeps us informed on all matters, and I appreciate him and the good job he's doing.
Mr. Mayor, my mind goes back to the, going through the process of hiring city manager, and with the help of MTS, we got to meet and evaluate some very talented people, talked to them, some remotely by Skype, but we decided as a council that the best fit for this position was already inside city hall, and the person, Mike Davidson. And I know he had a little bit of apprehension about the position at first, but I'm sure glad he made the decision he did, and I've come to appreciate him as a professional and as a person, and just very happy about the performance at this point in time.
Well, I appreciate all the city employees talking to Mr. Davidson at the time to get him to accept the position. I was very nervous that he wouldn't, but he, they prevailed, and he accepted it, and I think the rest is history. He's had an excellent two years, and I look forward to many, many more years of his service to the city of Cookville.
Councilman Womack, that's great. You stole some of the words I wanted to say, that he had to pretty much be talked into it, and it wasn't so much the council that did the talking, talked him into it. I think it was his peers, his administrative peers, and I want to thank you guys for doing that because the transition from Jim Shipley, who's, was, had, were big shoes to fill. We all know that, big shoes to fill, has been seamless and without any kind of hindrance or hiccups or anything of that sort, and that's a testament to the staff that we have here, and it's testament to Mike Davidson's acumen in getting the job done. And I want to take this opportunity, too. One of the things I was kind of a little bit concerned about is, you know, Mike had done such a great job in the finance department that I didn't know Brenda really very well at that time because Mike was doing all the talking, but Brenda, you've done a great job, too, and I want to thank you on behalf of city manager Davidson, that you've done a great job continuing the good works of this city, so thank you, too.
They've all said it. I'll just, a couple of things. Mike is an absolute true professional, and he's a pleasure to work with, and I think one of the best words that exemplifies him is just, he's just a complete man of integrity, and he, you know, keeps us informed, and we're in very, very good hands, and I'm very, very thankful that we have him at the helm. So, any other comments? So, any other comments?
All vote.
Bob, yes votes, motion carries.
Oh, do you want to say something, Mike?
I would just, I would like to say just thank you for your support, Mayor and council members, but also to the staff. There is no way in the world that I could even think about doing this job if it wasn't for the staff. I talk about the group that sits around the table Wednesday mornings, and it is just a pleasure to work with everyone here at the city of Cookeville. I couldn't imagine being any other place, and I'm thankful you're allowing me to stick around for a little while longer. Thank you.
Very good. That concludes our agenda portion. We have time at the end for citizens that would like to talk to the council about any non-agenda items. Do we have anyone?
I want to say something. Last meeting.
You're coming in a second. You don't count as a citizen, actually.
All right.
We're paying you. That's coming in a minute. Any other, any citizens? Okay, now, you may talk, sir.
We have a citizen.
Oh, we have, yes.
My name is John Bock.
Come up to the lectern, please, and identify yourself.
My name is John Bock. I'm a landlord, property owner here in Cookeville. I got here a little late, and you may have discussed some criteria for looking at that, what is it, Timeless Photography Land that is owned by Doc Smith as a possible police station, future police station? Worst location for a police station in Cookeville. I think the council has to put out a survey and question what other people think about that location as a possible police station. We are throwing away thirteen thousand five hundred for a geological core drill survey on the worst possible location for a police station here in Cookeville. I think the public here ought to be questioned or surveyed as to where a police station should be, and the city has missed many opportunities to pick other sites that are much better, because unfortunately, it's been an embarrassment for the city of Cookeville. I've been here for so many years, I've lived in so many other places, to have our police station in the basement, in the basement, for God knows, in such small inadequate facility for a city of this size. And I know why they need to get out and get a police station built, but you folks have looked at other places and have passed them by, which would have been much more appropriate than that site down there at Timeless Photography, to name a few. Regions Bank could have been had for one point two million, and Tennessee Tech comes along a year later and picks it up for two million. Spring Street, the old armory, could have been picked up for seven hundred thousand, much better location for a police station. You could have built in the front, kept the old armory, had facility, picked it up for seven hundred and fifty thousand. Again, the city passes it by. Right across the street, Parkview Elementary School. I know the reason why you have to pass in Parkview. That may take two or three years to get that land, and it's unfortunate that we already have the drawings and we already have the plans for a police station, and that they would have to wait another two or three years. So I understand they're wanting to get out of that basement. I would have wanted to get out of that basement years ago, but don't make a foolish decision and buy that land way out of sight. Survey and take, and take a survey and question the people here in Cookeville. Is that a good site for a police station?
Any other comments? Mr. Ryder.
I just, I wasn't here at the last meeting when the council voted to extend my term two additional years, and I just want to thank the council. I very much enjoyed working with every one of you, and I appreciate the confidence, and I look forward to working with you for the next two years, and my associates do as well. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for that.
Appreciate your service. Yes, sir. Council members, anybody have anything? We've got a movie in the park tomorrow night, I think it's ET, and then Saturday is the Soapbox Derby that's been going on here for many years. It's moved from, instead of 12th Street, it's out by Prescott School now, and what's?
West Cemetery.
So.
We have a concert tonight, Mayor.
It's canceled.
Did you cancel?
The concert in the park tonight is canceled, right, Rick? Yes. Yeah, it's canceled due to the weather. All right. We will be adjourned.